All right, so for those, oh, actually, we can go ahead and do real talk. So for those joining, we actually started the meeting a little while ago, held a brief Q and A session with a member of the public, and we're now reconvening to carry out our November business meeting. You'd want to do local?
Yes, President Clummins.
Here.
Vice President Valentine, Trustee McNamal.
Here.
Trustee Cover.
Here.
All right. And I don't believe we have any changes to the agenda, so may we have the recommended action, please?
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the agenda as written.
You have a motion, please?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So the Haldane Central School District's 2024 Capital Project Bond Referendum vote will be on Tuesday, November 19th, in the elementary school library. The polls will be open to registered voters from 7:00 in the morning until 9:00 at night. Because we'll be waiting for the vote that night, the board is going to convene at 8:30. I think I meant to email people about this and I forgot, so anyway, I'm sorry. That plan, since it will be for us to meet at 8:30 here in the middle school, high school library to conduct our workshop meeting, and then we'll probably finish around the time that the results of the vote will be announced, so at the close of the meeting. So, and I think we have on our meeting agenda the possibility of accepting the vote the following day, like in a Zoom meeting, but if we feel comfortable, we could go ahead and accept the results that night. Along those same lines, for folks that are interested in learning and hearing more, please be sure to go to our website, which has so much information. We're so grateful to Megan Shields, the district clerk, for all the work she's put into. Really, a fantastic website, including, as well as the architects who made some videos. We have tours this Thursday night at 6:30. Where are we convening those tours?
Um, well, where shall we convene them? We could start in front of the main building, maybe that's easier for people. We start at the flagpole entrance of the main building?
Yeah, and you'll email people who are RSVP.
I will definitely email people who are RSVP, yes.
All right. Um, maybe we'll just want to put, we'll think about that. And then Friday morning at 8:45, there's, that one will probably convene in the same place. We'll just be consistent in front of the main building. And then next Tuesday night at 6:00, which is before the PTA meeting, we're going to have a third.
PTA meeting and Booster Club meeting.
Oh, and Booster Club.
They're both meeting that night.
Yeah, that's right. Thanks for that reminder. So we'll do that tour at 6:00. And the other thing, actually, the only other thing I have in my comments, I know at our last meeting, I think Mr. Albano spoke at length to really thank everyone who had made the donation and worked into the Lori Isler Outdoor Classroom. I emailed the, or texted the board members a photo from that day, but I really just wanted to speak about what a really special ceremony that was. The entire school community was there, so the littles through the high school students. It was a beautiful day. Mrs. Sniffin did a fantastic job organizing the ceremony. It was really very lovely. And four or five students who had Miss Isler in the second grade spoke about how impactful she was on their lives. And another student saying, and it was just really, it was a really, it was really nice. And I understand, actually, every time I've been on the district, at the district, which feels like it happens pretty often these days, I always see somebody at the table. I haven't seen students there, but I mean, I haven't seen classes there, but I've seen students that are having lunch or hanging out, or it really seems like a great, a great space. So I just wanted to mention that. And then thanks also to members of the, anyway, Mr. Albano thanked everybody last time. I don't need to thank them again. So those are it for my comments.
Okay. Just have a few comments. First, just let the board and the community know that we had a, our superintendent's conference day today, highly productive and engaging day for, for the faculty, organized by our director of curriculum and HR, Josh Elder, who's here with us this evening. Thank you. And the entire admin team. It really was a collaborative effort, and each one of our administrators led sessions and, and things such as data analysis, vertical curriculum alignment, universal design, or UDL is the acronym we use in education. We're actually doing a district-wide read of universal design by Dr. Katie Novak. She's a leading expert in this area. So each building just had fantastic activities happening. Our department chairs also led work. And then we also sent out teachers from special areas, like art and music and health, to meet colleagues in this region. So, you know, when, when you're a small department, it's always helpful to know what's happening in, in other school districts throughout the county and the region. And the feedback on that was very positive as well. So additionally, I want to just keep the board informed of this. You are aware, you probably see it in, in the board news, the state board newsletter that comes out, and a lot of other publications. But Governor Hochul has announced a statewide ban, a bell-to-bell ban on school cell phones. There is a lot of pushback on this. The idea is that it would go into effect next school year. About a week and a half ago, the New York Council of School Superintendents, School Boards Association, School Administrators Association, the New York State PTA, the New York State Teachers Union, and representatives from the five big city school districts all met with Governor Hochul. And I do take that as a sign that she's listening. And the message we're told is that the request is for more local control. And, and don't just go with a one-size-fits-all, bell-to-bell ban. For example, here, as you probably know, in our district, we have a ban on cell phones in the classroom during instructional time. But our high school students, for example, may access their phones during lunch. We have an open campus. So we actually think it's helpful for them and safe for them to have their, their devices with them. But this bell-to-bell ban would require students to, you know, lock them in a secure place. And then there, there's also a call for enforcement and discipline if students violate the bell-to-bell ban. So, so at least we believe the governor is receptive and listening. We don't know if she will move forward with, with, you know, this, this very strict ban. But things such as, you know, iWatches, Apple Watches. What do we do with that? You know, how, how do you enforce this? And, you know, does an elementary school, you know, a ban, is that, should that, should that be the same as a high school and teenagers? And some superintendents have raised, you know, security. If, if we put out a security alert, you know, our students do receive it on their phones. And, and that is a positive thing. There's research, I think I shared this with the board, which I found very interesting. They shared with the governor that 60% is a nationwide poll. 68% of Americans support banning cell phones during class time. But a bell-to-bell ban, that support drops to 36%. So that, 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 I think, shows you that, you know, a strong majority of people don't support a total ban. So again, I think the governor was receptive. We'll hopefully have more information by budget time, but I will keep the board informed. And of course, our admin team is following this closely as well. But I think what we have now is working for us. It may not be perfect, and it's something that everybody is struggling with. Any questions or thoughts?
Yeah.
No, okay. All right, the next one is just to thank you. Jennifer Zarwich, who is a parent and the chairperson of the Tree Advisory Board for the Village of Cold Spring, worked on a grant with the committee and, for trees throughout the community. And five of those trees will be planted on our school property, on 9D, right, right along the tennis courts and below the field. We thank her and the committee, and the committee for that work, and the planting will occur on November 7. Peggy, I was just going to give a summary of some of the opportunities, but I think you maybe want to cover that, or?
Um, oh, did I do it at the beginning?
Were we on camera for Peggy's?
We were, yes.
We were. Okay, so we welcome, just doesn't hurt to say again, please, access to the web, the website. A lot of information is there, and, and a lot of time and energy went into, you know, making sure that information was valuable to the community. You got the video series, the last one will be out Friday. The newsletter, Megan, help me with this, it'll be out in about a week, probably by the end of next week.
It should go into, in the mail, the end of this week. So through the weekend and the beginning of the week, people should have it.
And that will be every community member, not just, you know, school parents. And then the Highlands Current, I know, is, is going to cover our project a bit further. There's already been a significant amount of coverage, and also the PCNR is, is running a story on it. And in a way, I, I know some people have, have said to us, you know, oh gee, we haven't heard information. We've deliberately held back because we don't want to compete with the, the national elections. Some of the timing of this was, was very deliberate, and over the next two weeks, there will be a lot of information. So hopefully, everyone feels well-informed. And of course, call, call any one of us at any time if you have questions.
It is very, it is harder to get information out to people who aren't on the district's email list. But we, hopefully, will just keep trying to figure out the best ways to do that. We certainly are, certainly are trying. All right. Thank you very much. All right, so we're now at the first opportunity for communication from the public related to special presentations and agenda, agenda items. The Haldane Board of Education desires and values input from the entire school community. This first public comment session is reserved for comments on any special presentations or active agenda items. For those who wish to address the board, please sign in and state your name for the record. Please keep your remarks to three minutes or less. We discourage disparaging remarks and discussion of school personnel. And although we would not engage in dialogue, please know that we're listening. And we'd ask you to leave your contact information with our district clerk for prompt follow-up from the board, president, me, or the superintendent. All right.
I am just going to add something and thank the superintendent, who Carl mentioned at a meeting with the admin team, that the area superintendents, as it relates to this phone ban, are also encouraging the governor to do more about social media and the way youth are accessing social media. And that if we could get politicians and our governor to address that area and focus more on social media, that it would be better for the youth and for our students. So I want to thank the superintendents because I know they're advocating that it go that way. And I hope the other units are all doing the same up at Albany. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Because that's like the source of the problem, right, is social media. It's not the phones per se, yeah, it's social media.
May I ask a question?
Of course.
Is there, is there a plan to engage the parent community here at Haldane? To see what their, the percentages you gave, where, about who's in favor of a total ban? Was that, is that statewide?
Yeah, that was a Pew, Pew Research National Survey. 68% of Americans support banning phones during class time.
Okay.
Which is our model. Bell-to-bell, which means you never can have a phone in the school, you know, when this, only 36% support that. So there, there's quite a bit of opposition.
Even, you know, just a survey or questionnaire to go out to the parent community would be of interest, you know, just to kind of find out where are our parents in this community on this topic?
I, I would agree. I, I think what we're advocating for is local control. Like, for example, a bell-to-bell ban may make sense in our elementary school. I think it's more challenging at the high school level, but, you know, we're asking, give us local control and allow us to make that decision. I know Mrs. Sniffin put out a poll to the entire faculty, and the results were, you know, were actually very helpful. So we may make some adjustments based on what our, our teachers are, are sharing as well. But I, you know, I like the idea of parents, and I think it would be more relevant if, if we do end up having local control. But if the governor implements a, you know, a top-down ban, then there's not much to discuss, but I, I think we may have challenges implementing that. I'm sorry, Maggie.
No, 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 I just, I was just going to say, just briefly, we had our policy committee meeting last week, and this is one of the topics that, you know, to Michelle's point of just sort of engaging the community. And just so we know, for those of us that don't have kids in high school, like, what is the policy? You know, what are they doing? What do you think? What are your recommendations? I think that, that, and also, there's a couple other topics we're talking about with AI as well. Just so kind of bringing some of these big discussions, you know, having these discussions sort of community-wide, I think, would, would help, definitely help as a board member, understand where everybody, you know, wants to go.
Sure, we could facilitate.
Does the district still send out like a Friday email to all parents?
There is a Friday email that goes out to all parents, which is really just a compilation of community flyers.
But that, you could imagine, that could be, that would be one way to get it to all parents. It's a trick, it's a trick.
Yeah, I think if we did a survey, we'd probably do it more directly and more targeted. I think unfortunately, parents may be in the habit of overlooking that Friday email. But we could very easily send it by school and, yeah. I think it would deserve its own space if we did that.
That's a, that's a great idea. When this was a, a topic sort of in the news at the beginning of the school year, it gave me the opportunity to speak with Mrs. Sniffin about, and actually, I guess I was talking to Mrs. Sniffin about how the district, how our district goes about it. And one of the things I, I felt really good about was that our policies, policies are set up so that our building leaders, in collaboration with the rest of the administrative team, can make the decision that we feel is a right fit for Haldane, but also developmentally for, you know, for students. And so I, the idea that it would be such a radical top-down policy, it's, 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 I somehow, I guess in all the other news, I somehow missed, I didn't know that she had, that that was actually where she was leaning. So thank you for that information.
Sure.
So next on our gen, is, on our agenda are information reports that will act on our, oh my God, December business meeting. And then. Bye, Josh. Bye, Christine. So we'll move into consent agenda minutes. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have committee minutes from the Policy Committee and the Coaching Conduct Committee. I know we're about to act on or read some different policy things. Is there anything you all want to?
No, that was a busy meeting. Yeah, I don't think so. I think one of them that we are approving tonight was kind of a language, right? A queen of language, and it was about the equal educational opportunities of the youth. And it actually took out a chunk of the policy and put it into a new policy that we're going to, that's, that'll be a second reading. So first, we're now on the second reading. So that was more of a language, pulling that section out and language for tonight.
I would just add, in addition to what's on the agenda tonight, we did receive a new policy audit.
Oh, great, good.
So we're going to, at our next meeting, sort of shift gears from the regular review to focus on starting to go through the audit.
Did it seem, are we, is it?
I guess at this point, it's. Wasn't that big, you know, we've had some in the past that were very big. This one is, I don't know, sort of middle, but.
And how are you liking that committee?
Learning so much.
Yeah, yeah.
It was really good.
So things that come up. And like, we were, so we're talking about current policies because of things that had come up. And then, of course, the, the policy polls, and then we're still reading the, right?
Yeah, everyone. Yeah, there you go. All right. All right, well, thanks to you all. You're not part of Convent, that's right.
No, I'm on that.
Oh, you what?
I was.
Oh, you, oh, okay. And so now we're going to move into consent agenda financial. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Oh, actually. Why am I having a blankie?
There's several grants.
There's several grants, yes. Before we vote, yes, we've had a motion and second, and I actually, what, there's now is my time. I wanted to say a few things. Well, there are so many, are there things that you, I don't want to take over?
You could take.
No, there are really, this, this particular set of financial resolutions for, or, yeah, actions for us to act on are really represent so many different contributions from the community. And we are so appreciative. So there's, except, there's grants from the Haldane Arts Foundation. There's a donation from the Football Association and Coach McConville. And just a big slew of grants from the Haldane School Foundation. Fifty, almost $57,000. And not that the amount is so spectacular, because the, the grants from the Haldane Arts Foundation are so important as well in, in really helping, supporting work related to the arts. So anyway, I just wanted to call those out.
Yeah, someone that I know that recently moved to the community was really interested, like, where can I come? How can I get involved in the school in a way that might have the biggest impact? Like, and I said, well, you know, there are many ways too, but really, if you really want to see how your impact happens, it's to provide the opportunity for these grants to be applied for and to get involved with the foundation, I think is a really great way to see how your energy can turn into action, like, you know, in a way that you can meet the community before you get involved, because it's, it seems to be a roving party of individuals who just want to raise money and, and support programs. So it's just kind of full of joy and generosity. I'm grateful to everybody in both organizations.
If I could just add, just from a newcomer's perspective, what's very impressive is that each one of them, each organization is incredibly collaborative. I met, Megan was good enough to set up initial meetings over the summer, but they really listen. They meet with our admin team, and, and they do a great job of listening to what the needs are. How can we enhance, you know, students' learning experiences? And I'm just really impressed with the collaboration of each and every organization. It's not just that they raise money and, you know, kind of throw it at the district. It's, it's a very thoughtful process, and I appreciate that.
All right, so now. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have consent agenda personnel. You have a motion, please?
So moved.
And I don't think here there's anything that we want to touch on, so we'll go ahead and move to the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, and so moving into new business, the CSE, DTS recommendation. May we have the recommended action, please?
It resolved that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the recommendations of the Committees on Special Education and Preschool Special Education as presented.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the external audit report, the recommended action, please?
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the corrective action plan for the external audit report for the 2023-2024 school year.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And is there anything that Catherine or Mr. Albano wants to note about this? I mean, I think we had kind of talked a little bit about it before, but.
Yeah, a corrective action plan is just a document that we send yearly to the state that addresses any finding that was on the audit. And all we did was explain, you know, that we were over the 4% and that we have to just come up with a plan to how we hope to have it not happen again. And our action plan was, as we discussed, that we will take it into account during budget development. And we also will put a proposition on the ballot in May to increase the limit that we can put in our capital reserves.
Catherine, thank you so much for all your work on this. Um, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And now approval of overnight field trips.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the following overnight trips. Model UN to Yukon, Boys Varsity Basketball Team to Springfield Mass Shusets, the High School Ski Club to Gore and Whiteface Mountains, the junior class to Washington DC, the senior class to Philadelphia, and the eighth grade to Frost Valley.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
So actually, I don't think we've actually approved them all at once, but this is actually what we want to be doing.
It is, we started to do it last spring.
Okay, all right, okay.
And I think this is another thing that maybe came out of policy that we.
You, that we, yes. Yeah, but I think it's actually really important that we have all of them here. We're applying a really consistent approach to all the field trips. And so any others that might be proposed and considered would, would just come to the board separately. Great plan to go to Philadelphia. I love Philadelphia so much. Good idea. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So now a discussion of the Capitol referendum tours. So it, we, it sounds like we have at least one RSVP for Thursday.
We do have about one for each.
Okay.
I think Friday morning, we have a couple, one of whom is our friend John Headland.
Okay.
So just to check in on who might be planning to attend these, we, one of the things that I wanted to touch on too, we had originally asked CS Arch to attend each of the tours. I just didn't know if we wanted to think about that in light of our anticipated attendance.
I thought the last time, we thought we would just ask them to come to the first one. And then, I thought that's what we talked about at the meeting with them. I do think it might be helpful for them to come to the first one.
Okay.
If they could.
Thursday night.
Thursday night, so that. But I don't think we're going to necessarily need them after that. I mean, and I don't know, I mean, I'm open to be disagreed with if we even want them to come on Thursday. Do you think we need? Will Adam be there at the tour? Uh, what's the tour?
I think he'll be at the Friday one. I will definitely be at the Thursday one. I, I think, you know, we, we did provide a tour, Julie and I and Christine for the PTA Executive Board. And it, it was our first tour, yeah, so we worked out a few little details, but we think it went really well, and we didn't have our architects there. And, but I, and I think that the real value was to see firsthand, you know, we, we, no matter how much you try to explain verbally, you know, the project, I think seeing the building, seeing some of the challenges and the issues was very helpful. I, the feedback was very positive, so I think we could replicate that. We talked about a few little, you know, tweaks to, to, to the process. Personally, I don't think CS Arch is needed, but.
That's fine. Yeah.
Okay.
They're, I, I don't have an issue with it.
I don't know if it would ramp up attendance, but what about a poster at Food Town or the rec? I don't know if they're already there, but like with the dates of, uh, I don't know. Sometimes people, you know, if they're not clicking on the emails, and I mean, it's on the social media accounts and.
Yep.
But maybe some paper posters.
That is a really good idea, at least.
While they're passing through the kids or something. It's frustrating a little bit. I feel that there's not more people signed up to come. So I'm just trying to think.
I think Food Town, so the places, because we've been thinking about this for another group that I'm part of. Food Town, the library.
Yeah, library.
Cold Spring Coffee House has a really good bulletin board in the back. Split Rock Books will put posters in. So Food Town Butterfield.
Drug World, Drug World.
Drug World, yeah, that's a good idea.
Few around town, maybe that could, you know, attract some attention.
I think that's a, that's a great idea. It's interesting. I was at, like, I was at this meeting recently, trying to, it's hard, how do you get the word out, right? Especially since we don't have control over social media, out, social media algorithms. You don't really always know what people are necessarily going to see. And the idea of just paper flyers in places like that was a really good way. So, yeah.
Worth a shot.
I don't want to speak out of turn, but is a puzzle to post, cross-post things in other forums, like those?
The locals?
So that's, I mean, we, we certainly could, I mean, I'll be honest, it's, it's interesting. It's, it's come up in another conversation I've had about. It's, it's come up in another conversation I've had about the Capitol referendum. The district made a pretty concerted decision a while ago not to be doing a lot on social media. Um, and it was because like, people are using, you know, Facebook is what we had used, but younger people aren't really using Facebook. And so, um, I just don't, and it feels weird to like, out of the blue, just like totally change our practice. But at the same time, like, it wouldn't hurt, like, I, I mean, if what we're hearing, which I think to some extent we are, that people aren't, don't feel like they have information, maybe a handful of posts from the district, not by board members, on Phillips Town Locals would be a good way.
You just share it from Howl Dane to Phillips Town Locals.
Yeah.
And I think that would get the info out for sure.
Okay.
Or have a member of the community.
There's definitely members of the community.
There are, there are definitely.
You know, I guess it potentially opens up, you know, you could maybe shut comments, you know? You don't have to allow comments on it. That way it doesn't open the door to potential, look at, you know, this amount of money, da-da-da, you know?
As the poster, I can do that. I, I thought that, I thought the administrator could do that.
Oh. See, that's why, that's why we haven't, that's one of the reasons why we haven't.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, you know, the effort of doing it is obviously nothing. But I think that, um, I don't, in my opinion, that would not be the place to engage in dialogue.
Yeah. Agreed.
And so, do we think that invites that as a place to engage in dialogue?
Yeah.
Or do we just post it and let it live?
Yeah.
Well, you know, it's just, it's a troll farm and that's what it'll turn into, so.
I think that's why we decided not to use social media. I think when we, we can post things on our own Facebook page where we don't allow comments, right?
No, no, we do, um, so we, we post extensively on our own Facebook page and our own Instagram page. And as administrators of our own Facebook page, we, um, have the ability to see comments. Although I will say, our audience has always been wonderful. And the comments that we get on Facebook are always very complimentary about all types of things. All of our programs and activities and.
Right. Right.
And remind me, our student messenger system, the texting system can only be used for dedicated security issues, correct?
And no, no, we can text about a variety of things. We try not to abuse it, but we, we can text families. We certainly, the day of the vote could text a reminder to vote. Yep.
Now, I, I guess my question might be, are there any of these events between now and the nineteenth that we want to focus on that are particularly important, other than the vote? In order to reach folks that we know they're going to get the text. They might hate us for getting the text, but it's a way to at least ensure that they will have received that message.
Sure, right. And, and one more thing beyond the email, yeah.
I, I, if it feels like a redundancy.
Very easy to do if it's something we want to do.
I know, I for one am much more likely to look at the text than I am to read the email with immediacy and interest. But let's, let's speak to my age more than.
Right. But one of the, the issues, so what I think we've heard is that people who are connected to the district because they have children in the district and are on those email and text lists are receiving information about, are, are receiving of, of information about the vote. What I'm hearing from people who don't have children in the district is that they're not sure where to get the information. Now then, it, that, I'll be honest, at this point, at the, I'm not sure, but because for really legitimate reason, the board a while ago decided not to be, other than posting on our own Facebook and Instagram pages, decided not to engage in social media because it can come so quickly. The conversation can get really out of control and.
Oh, yeah.
Turn, uh, uh, ugly in a way that, that we're not going to engage, you know, that we're just not going to engage in. And I'll, um, it's been such a long time since we had that conversation. I can't really remember it that well. And I'll be honest, I'm not sure we should change our policy on that at this point without really deliberating about it a little bit.
I'm sorry, I was talking about texting.
Yes, yes, I know, sorry. And the point I was making was, I think, I think we can text and email. I think that's fine.
Okay.
I think that what I'm hearing from people in the community, because I'm a person who doesn't have children in the district and my friends don't have children in the district, is that people aren't, people don't know where to get information. They don't, they don't have the information.
Right.
And it is on the website. I, at this point, I feel like we're now going to have three weeks of half-page newspaper ads in both of the newspapers. That's something Megan and I talked about. We've had ads in the paper before then, they were smaller, you know, um.
They will receive a newsletter.
They will receive the newsletter.
Receive a postcard.
They'll receive a postcard. The, and, and both the news, the, the, the newsletter has information. The ads direct people where to get information. And then postcard directs people where to get information, right? So I'm, so my, yeah, so, um.
I think my point was, if we're interested in letting folks know that the tours in particular are happening.
Ah, yes.
I do think that the parents who are in district may not be aware of when they're happening, how they're happening, where to meet, and a text might be.
A text with them.
Oh, there's a text and I happen to be there and maybe I can.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Because the idea to get more engagement, so the more, more engagement, and I think the more engagement, no matter who it comes from, means that there are more people in the community who know, who are informed, and then can talk to other people about it to make sure that people get information. So we've talked about, I think, I think flyers are a good idea. And they're pretty doable.
Um, and I, I've changed my mind about putting it on locals, I think. Don't do it.
I will send a text about the tours. We will do the flyers if you think of other spots or.
Yeah.
Anybody would text back. Stack of flyers to pass out along their journey, let me know.
Oh, actually, you know what? I want a couple, I'm going to put some at, at the railroad station. I don't know, they might get taken down right away, but that would be a good, you'd catch some people there.
And we'll use our texting sparingly. We'll use it to tell them about the tours and we will remind people the day of the vote.
Yeah.
Um, and there will be a glut of, of, of yard signs that we can repurpose if we want, starting tomorrow. Hopefully, but yeah.
Write it in.
Yes.
Um, you could get a Sharpie tonight.
That's right.
We're going to drop them off at your house, Sean.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
So the Sean point out, like, really good, making sure that, that families and parents know. And then also this other conversation about how to get the word out more broadly. Making a decision at that, at this point, that the board is going to stick with what has been a years-long practice of not actively going out on other social media sites, posting nicely on our own, but really not engaging in, in other ways because of our concern about how the tenor of those conversations can change in a way, and we are not going to engage in those. That's what we've, that's been our practice, so we're going to stick with that for now. Recognizing that it may, I, I know there was some frustration about it not being out, but, um, uh, on those, on those kinds of sites. But again, I think the, the district has a, a really solid rationale for why we've done things the way we've been doing them. Okay. Um, so, okay, that was the tours. So now, actually, we're going to talk about the school, um, detail reports, right? Are going to start coming up. We'll have the elementary school in, um, oh, actually, I'm going to go back to the tours for one second. Ezra and I are going to go on Thursday night.
I'm, I'm on Friday.
You're, and Sean's going on Friday morning. I can't go, I have a work meeting on Friday morning. And then next Tuesday, I think I've signed up to go next Tuesday.
Okay, great. Thank you.
May show up.
Probably enjoy, I think I can join for that one.
You okay?
I think I can, yeah.
Okay.
I'll double check.
Um, but Maggie, you have children that have at night, so that's harder for you to do, yeah.
No, I, well, let me, if Michelle can't make it, I should be able to make it work. So you have to, they're just.
Um, and actually, while we're just talking about it, I mean, I've been doing this as well, but I just really want to acknowledge that Megan and Julia and Carl and Regina and others, I mean, I have gone to so real, I mean, I, 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 I understand why people may not be hearing about it, but it is really not because of a lack of effort on the part of the district. I'm not kidding, I think I had eight meetings last week related to school board business. And a lot of it had to do with the Capitol referendum because we had other people coming in from the community wanting to meet with us, going to, to village meetings, town meetings. Um, it's a, it's tricky in such an information-rich society when people are going to so many meetings and making so many efforts. The fact that it is hard to get the word out is, is, is hard. But yeah, people are working really hard to get the information out. Um.
I thought what Mr. Albano and Sniffin had to say. The HSF event on Saturday night went over great, parents seemed really, you know? I mean, a lot of them are, you know, I don't know if a lot of them knew about, um, a lot of information about it, but I think, um, they were really excited and I think they'll remember to pass the word on to other people. You know, as, as I do think that, um, obviously, eh, they're going to be very, um, just influential, I think, with, you know, talking to their friends and reminding them to make sure to get out there.
I mean, I know, I mean, I don't know about you all, but literally, when I talk to people and I'm like, you know, so do you have any questions about the, the Capitol referendum, you know? And, and really spending a few minutes, you know, get your elevator speaks down for like, the, you know, the three bucket, you know? To, to share, again, our goal at this point is to share information, right? That, that's what we want to be doing, so.
I'll say that there was a considerable amount of that discussion on Halloween evening while trick-or-treating.
Oh, good.
So, yeah, so there are a lot of folks who are interested or want more information.
Good, good, good.
I wouldn't say it was the chief topic of the evening, but it's.
All right, so now talking about the school detail reports, right? We're coming into that time of the year, we're going to start to hear from the building leaders and following in the, uh, the new practice that we instituted last year. We'll have a couple of, of board members, um, visit each of the schools right before, um, those presentations. Um, our goal is to really just make more connections with students and teachers and to really see what's happening in the schools, as well as to be able then to listen with a different kind of ear. Um, and so we need to, so the present, the reports are scheduled for the third, the twenty-first and the eighteenth.
I just, sometimes the dates creep up on us kind of quickly. So if people could start to think about which tours they would want to participate in, then I can work with the principals to get it set up in advance.
Okay, so actually, do we want to do that really quickly right now? I want to do elementary school.
And I'd like to do the high school.
I can do middle school. Maggie, do you have anything you want to do?
I'll do elementary.
Okay, great, great. Um, I didn't do middle school last year, so I'll do middle school as well.
Okay, maybe Ezra would be interested in doing high school.
Yeah.
He's tough to get, though, but.
He is, I don't think he was able to do one last year.
Yeah.
And if he's not, then I.
Yeah.
Might, I could, I could, I could go to, and I could.
Go back to high school.
You've got one, it's a great.
A great tour.
Find some other good ones. Yeah. Okay, so at least, um, so I will definitely work on getting elementary set up.
Yeah. Yeah, so you said, do you do want to go?
I would, I would love to go on the high school.
Okay, so, so, because that makes sense.
Okay.
And if, if Ezra does want to go on one, we can, we can figure out a way to accommodate that. Um, and then just one more thing about these, one of the things we realized at the end of last year was, was so great to really learn about curriculum and instruction, to have those conversations. But a purpose of these visits is to also learn about what's happening with the facility. And so I've talked with Mr. Albano, and we're going to try and incorporate a piece of that, um, as, as well. Um, so now we're going to go into the policy review, this time a, a first reading and adoption, unless people object, um, to, um, policy sixteen forty. May we have the recommended action, please?
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby waives the second reading and adopts the following Howl Dane Central School District policy as attached, sixteen forty absentee military and early male ballots.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And so next we have policy reviews, this time in our sort of more official way of just first readings of these policies. Giving people a chance to read them, reflect on them, ask any questions, and then we would, um, ask on them at the next meeting. Um, Maggie, Maggie, you already mentioned that really sort of pulling some stuff out of one and making a new policy. Anything else you want to add?
I don't think so, um, it's just, you know, definitely take a look at the seven, seven five five five, that's the one that's new. I don't, you know, chat about it, but, um, seven five five four took out the part about pregnant students, so.
And which one is required, I believe?
I, I listed it here, so seven five five four is required, seven five 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 is not required.
It's optional, but. But it has information that used to be in.
Yes.
So it seems like we, I know.
And I think my only concern with, uh, the seven five 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 one, um, is that it was, that it was talking about educational, uh, like equal educational opportunity for married people, pregnant people, but I wondered about new parents. Like if there was wording in the policy, kind of, you know, specify, you know, unless it's a condition related to pregnancy, you can make the argument that parenthood is a condition related to pregnancy. But I just wanted to, you know, confirm that there was wording in there to accommodate, you know, equal educational opportunity for.
Right. Yeah.
I will follow up with Erie about that and see if they have anything, any intended subsequent policy.
Lactation was all in there, but it wasn't, I don't know. It was just like, it seemed like it could just be added as a, just simple.
Oh, and part of the title.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Perhaps.
Oh, because it should be married parenting and pregnant.
Yeah, yeah, it's like using the word married, you know?
Yeah, because married really infers, yeah, yeah, that's really good, that's a really good catch. Oh, thanks for following up about that, Maggie.
Yes.
Um, so we're now at the, um, second opportunity for communication from the public about all school district matters. Uh, any board reflection?
I just wanted to mention that, uh, two days after our last board meeting was Jennifer Windell's last day.
Oh.
She was, you know, a long time.
She was.
No elementary school teacher, um, she'd been doing third grade for a while, and my daughter had a wonderful experience with her. I will miss seeing her around, and I know there's a lot of people that, um, that will miss her. She was here for over twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, so anyway, we will miss you.
I will miss you. Yeah.
Your daughter will miss you.
Yeah, that's right, because we, we talked about when, I think we acknowledged her when we were with.
In May.
In May, but yes, it was in the fall, and I guess October came and, yeah.
Twenty-one, so.
Yes, well, she was a long time teacher.
And I'll just point out, going to the HSF event was great. I mean, there's been talk, a, a lot of schools are really moving toward, you know, cutting back on their events. And it's hard to get people out at events, and, you know, they're looking to raise money in other ways. And the Howl Dane School Foundation continues to do a really good job bringing people together in the community to come and, you know, be with each other and also raising a good deal of money for the grants that you're seeing. Um, uh, you know, funding really awesome things for the school. So I just think it's wonderful to be able to, you know, it's a lot of work that goes into planning those events, so. It's nice to see a good portion of the school community out, a lot of administrators are there, it's a lot of fun. And they raise some good cash.
Uh, recently, I know there's some reporting on the possibility that the Regent exams will be phased out in the, over the next three years, which is very big news. And I know there's lots of, I don't, I'm sure if I did a poll, there would be varying opinions about, you know, the wisdom of that. But I just know that that's a, a consideration that, uh, administrative leaders and school leaders will be thinking about as we move forward. Because my understanding is that in lieu of these tests, there are other opportunities to demonstrate proficiency. And I, I know that as you develop what those might look like, it, it will be no easy feat. But I think it does, uh, provide an opportunity for many students in the, you know, for whom the Regents have got a real bar to success. So, um, I think it's good news, uh, for some and, you know, an adventure, I'm sure. How to assess is going to be an adventure, I'm sure, so.
And I actually do have one other thing, this, we, I, I know at the, um, Code of Conduct meeting, the attendance policy came up. And this, I got, you know, this recent issue of On Board, um, features Yonkers and how they were able to really, um, increase their attendance. And there's a couple of really interesting things in there. There's like, you know, Family Engagement Fridays, there's this buddy system where kids. where kids are assigned, somebody at, you know, an older kid or somebody at the school where they like touch base with them if they're absent, I don't know. Don't need to go into all of it, but I know this is something that our school is concerned about, as many schools are, so it's interesting to look at some schools that are having, um, some positive, um, movement. Um, so I would just recommend, you know, maybe for our next Code of Conduct meeting, to take a look at that article and maybe come up with some thoughts on, you know, what we could do to, to, uh, you know, work on increasing our attendance.
They, well, I just really briefly, I wanna thank that Phillips Town Climate Smart, um, folks who wrote a really thoughtful uh, letter to the board recently and then came in and met with Mr. Albano and, and me, um, also at our last, actually, it wasn't at our last Q and A, I think it was actually when we did the presentation. Um, Ethan Tim was there and he wrote the board a really thoughtful email, um, we haven't had a chance to connect, but, um, I may just reach out to him. Personally, schedules have made it difficult. Um, and, um, you know, other people, uh, you know, in the community, uh, you know, really, uh, you know, interested in learning about the Capitol referendum and share their thoughts about it. Um, I spent a couple of hours actually with Joe Cargill last week, um, at, which was, you know, really very helpful. Um, and so just thanks to everybody in the community who's, um, you know, who's engaged and asking questions, yeah.
Thanks for all your work on it.
Yes, thank you, thank you. You need a big gold star, man, a real gold at the end of this.
Um, and, um, yes, that's really what I have, yeah. Do you have any?
Just one list.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Very positive thing, so each board member has a copy of the Haldane Outlook. Um, I, I'd like to invite our, our principal up, Julia, you know a lot more about this, but I met a few of our reporters, and Joey Asher, I have to tell you, you gotta look out, because you got some competition here in, in our high school, but they, they, they just did an amazing job.
It is.
Please, if you haven't had a chance to read through the articles, um, but, uh, Mrs. Sniffin, can, can you just give us a little more background, because thi- this is something that is fairly new, right? Where they brought back the newspaper?
Um, so Jen Zork and, um, Lincoln Whalen's dad, um, I can't think of his name.
John.
John Whalen, um, along with Kira Shanahan, um, who is the chief editor, is a student. Um, Lincoln is the assistant editor, um, really started this idea over the summertime. Um, and we have a journalism class, um, on campus that does writing, has worked with, um, local papers in the past. Um, they put out a blueprint, which is the school newspaper in-house. Um, but this was raising it to another level and, and really, um, working with students outside and inside of the school. So there is some students from the journalism class, um, that are writing articles and submitting them, and then the students are going through the process of then editing, deciding if it's worthy of being in the printed paper or the online edition. Um, but the Whalens have been, been great, um, the, the local paper, um, Chip Row and Joey Asher have been fabulous working with the students, um, they're there at nights. Um, the Haldane School Foundation has approved a grant to continue the printing edition of the paper. Um, but I, I can't be more proud of the kids. Um, they really have taken this and they've run with it. Sometimes I get nervous, as many of you know, about how much these kids take on. Um, and every student that's listed in there is not just doing the paper, they're doing many, many other things. I just met with Kira today, because she's organizing, um, Poughkeepsie's debate team to come down and have practice debates for two different sessions here at Haldane, and she's making sure all the paperwork's sold out after she just, you know, finalized. And I think they were, they were at the office until late, late finalizing, um, from what I heard, the editing. They get to do the final editing and the layout, um, there. So Ashley Linda's class is doing a lot of work around the process of writing in journalism and being a journalist. Um, and the outside parents have been phenomenal to support the kids, and so.
That's great.
Great, is it being just so good to students?
Yeah, so there's newspaper stands all in the high school, um, and so, they're picking up the newspaper and you walk by the seniors, and I know, like, last year we walked by the seniors and they were doing the New York Times Crossword puzzle. Just the last couple of days, they were just all reading the newspaper, I think Joey walked by, and what did you say? You're like, I feel like I'm in the 50s. When we walked upstairs, he was there to do an article. He was there to do an article at, with Lincoln and some other students that he was interviewing, and he walked upstairs and.
Yeah. We got, there are goats on the hill and kids reading newspapers.
And he says, you said, he's like, what is this, the 50s?
It looked like they knew what they were, they had it the right way and everything, good. Oh, can I say, may I say one more thing, too? One of the, one of the items that you approved this evening was the, uh, we're re-upping Damian's contract, where, I believe it's in there, so. Just wanna note that. Thank goodness Damian has did like this, thank you for your interest in maintaining your relationship with the district.
Um, all right. I'm going to make a motion to adjourn the meeting, may I have a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.